Well.
Or low some.
Right in that area, you know, the giant buildings. I like it crazy.
Now I know, I I I assume that much.
So do you have reports on the proposed just strategic plan thing tonight, or do you wanna? I just think we wait on that till everybody's here.
Yeah, I don't have any.
No reports, okay, alright.
I could report on sort of updating on what we're doing and where people are at, but.
Yeah, because Lars is online, Scott's gone.
You're doing the Bangor.
Maybe just the three of us tonight. Four with Lars on there. And then you just have to do a repeat when they all come back. Start over. So the county mayor, if you have any, I will come after you. Um, has closed all county facilities starting at six o'clock tonight and all day tomorrow. So all the senior, senior citizens, all the ice rink tonight. That's where I got my first call phone call. We had an appointment tonight. The mayor's closing down. I'm like, not this mayor, not the mayor. And so. On social media, they're supposed to be clearing that up, but. Everything's closed.
And they've already, those deliveries are going out tomorrow.
No, just, I hope we really get this one.
Schools found out they can do it on Halloween, so.
So they do. That's Chief and I were talking, we never had school days. Or snow days, no snow days.
Occur on.
Well, when we grew up, I didn't have them at all. Oh, okay.
Get your buses out there.
Oh.
Predicted to come in. Never came.
Well, that's Brian said, I remember one snow day, they sent us home and looking at the sky, it was black up north. But it never hit, it's like, and I think.
They sent everybody home, you know, we're busting.
Oh, did you? Yeah, those like four people. Oh, I just think Cobton sounds cool to live, but.
It is, but.
Yeah. Alright, well, welcome everyone and call to order the study meeting of the West Valley City Council. It is February twenty first, twenty twenty-three. Four thirty P M. And we're in the multipurpose room of West Valley City Hall. We have. Um, we will excuse Councilman Harmon. For today's meeting, we have. Councilman Jitsi Amano on virtually and Councilman Northvelt virtually. And present, we have Councilman Christensen. Councilman Whitestone, Councilman Huna, myself, and we're joined at the table. With Mr. Pyle, our city manager, and Ms. Camick is virtually as well. Um, I'll now turn the time to the council for discussion or a motion on the minutes of February fourteenth, twenty twenty-three.
A motion to approve second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Thank you.
Aye.
Alright, and those pass. Uh, we have for our regular meeting tonight. Is there any adjustments or?
No, ma'am.
Nothing there. Did anybody have any questions? Before that meeting? Sweet. We will now turn the time over for our legislative update to. Mister Schertz.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. Thanks for the opportunity today. Uh, wanted to spend a little bit of time talking about one of the major issues that we're working on. Uh, the bill just popped out on Thursday, Friday of last week, which is House Bill four ninety-nine. Uh, sponsored by Representative Steve Eless, and then that deals with homeless services. Uh, which is many of you are a very important topic here for the city. So. A couple of things to be aware of in the legislation, and then if I can, what I'd love to do is get some feedback. From the council is kind of directionally how you want us to approach this issue. As I do think Representative Elisten is open to some negotiations on how they proceed forward. So. I'll first start with the financing, uh, components of the legislation, and then secondarily talk about the proximity issues, which is. Uh, some of the provisions that we negotiated in last year's effort as it related around homelessness. So first on financing, um, I think one of the major tenants that West Valley City has put forward with the legislature. Is we're comfortable paying into the mitigation fund, and the mitigation fund is that fund that goes to those communities that are the host. To an existing homeless, uh, shelter facility within their city. So right now that amount is capped at two hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Two fifty, five zero?
Mm-hmm, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Under the proposed legislation, the cap would be moved to two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, so an additional twenty-five thousand dollar increase. Currently, West Valley City is subject to the cap, so we are at the capped amount, because we don't host a shelter, we do pay that two hundred and fifty thousand dollars into the fund. So there would be the potential under its current draft to increase the cap by twenty-five thousand dollars. Uh, that would go into that mitigation fund. The second piece of the legislation deals with proximity. So as you may recall, when we negotiated this legislation in prior years. We restricted areas in which homeless shelters could be located. We said that they had to be a certain distance away from residential neighborhoods. We said that they had to be a certain distance away from liquor stores or other attractive nuisances. We said they had to be a certain distance away from an existing homeless resource facility located within the county. And as currently drafted, the language still has all of the provisions in there except one, and that is. Location to an existing homeless resource center. So in conversations with Wayne Nederhauser, who's the homeless resource coordinator for the state of Utah. He said one of the potential areas they're looking is the liquor store that's located on Redwood Road in about thirty-four hundred south. Um, as one of the potential opportunities. In working with staff here at the city, we did see that the current. Location is just roughly a mile away from the existing homeless resource center that's located in South Salt Lake. The League of Cities and Towns was having a conversation with Wayne Nederhauser today. To see if that was one of the potential options, or if it was the preferred option. For the homeless community, when I say the homeless community, the advocacy community as well as for. Um, Wayne Nederhauser, we have not gotten feedback from that meeting that was being held at four o'clock today, so I'll find that out today. There are two other sites that are currently being negotiated by. Uh, Wayne Nederhauser, one's in Sandy City and the other is in Mill Creek. And what we're trying to figure out is if he has preferences to kind of directionally where they want to go. And the reason that that's important for us. Is to kind of give us a framework of what the potential negotiations may be as it relates to this bill. Uh, Wayne has suggested to us that there would be a willingness that if a city were willing to host. The homeless in a winter overflow shelter. It would take them off of the list for consideration for a future permanent shelter. Um, and so I think that's one of the calculations that we as the city need to contemplate is. Would there be value in essentially taking it in a temporary basis? For a winter being the twenty twenty-four, twenty, what would that be, twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four winter? And then taking ourselves off of the list for consideration for a more permanent facility moving forward? Or do we want to restrict kind of any sort of participation? Both in the temporary sense as well as in the permanent sense. For whatever reason, and I think it's candidly just proximity to services, West Valley City continues to find itself on the shortlist. Um, for this quote unquote prize, uh, that's out there in terms of homeless resource services. And I think the advocacy community has kind of pivoted a little bit in terms of what its narrative was last year. If you recall, last year, they were talking about the value of a dispersed model. Meaning having shelters in various communities throughout the state, so that you didn't create an attractive nuisance by having them all aggregated in a, in a single location. I think what they've realized since that point, and the reason that their tone has changed is providing services when you have folks spread throughout the county. Becomes increasingly more costly and encumbersome. And so from that standpoint, I think. From their perspective, there's some value in having kind of a co-located facility, which is why I think the liquor store, liquor store keeps finding itself on the list. And so at this point, I kind of wanted to get some feedback as this is kind of a moving target about those two elements. One is. To what extent do we care about the increase in the cap by twenty-five thousand dollars? And do we want to have a conversation with Wayne Nederhauser as it relates to? Doing something on a temporary basis to protect ourselves on a more permanent shelter? Do we want to just say no to both? Do we want to say no to this, recognizing that exposes us to a more permanent shelter long term? And candidly, just get some feedback from the council and you mayor as to directionally how you want us to approach this in our ongoing conversations with. With Wayne Nederhauser and then Representative Elisten. The bill just got numbered, just came out. It will likely be in committee in the next day or two in the House Committee and will move fairly quickly through the process. Um, so that gives you kind of an idea. We've got nine days, eight days left in the legislative session, so this is going to get jammed through relatively quickly. Uh, which means the direction I get tonight will be the direction we're using to kind of finalize these negotiations as we don't have much time to negotiate this at this point. And I will just say, part of the negotiation can be fight everything. I don't want you to think we're saying that we have to negotiate on this issue. It can also be. Heck no to everything. We want you to make sure that it doesn't locate West Valley City. I just want to make sure I understand the parameters of, of the conversation from your perspective.
Okay. Any comments? So for me, um, Mayor Silver Strini has had the temporary shelter up there this year in a county library. They have had success. In the fact that they bus them in and then they bus them, uh, bus them in at seven o'clock at night and then out at seven. Or eight, whatever time it is, but they're only there twelve hours. They have been, nobody's really been staying around much. The big concern was whether or not people wouldn't leave in the morning and hang around the neighborhoods. And they haven't seen a problem there. It has increased their. Police presence in that area, so that is an additional cost to them. But in our meeting. Last Thursday, he pretty much said they were willing to have a temporary shelter permanently. If it's just to bring them in at night, take them out in the morning. Really short term. So for them, it's been working out alright. I don't know that we want to volunteer for that, or if we need to put ourselves on the. Calendar, let's get it over with. That's how, I mean, if every single city took a turn. There wouldn't be a permanent temporary shelter.
Yeah, you wouldn't see it for twenty more years.
Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely.
At least.
One other element to just make sure I was being clear, if we did become a host either for a temporary shelter or obviously a permanent, we would. Exclude ourselves from participating in the mitigation fund, meaning we would be a recipient, recipient of those dollars as well.
But they're not paying back what they're.
No.
And for me, my biggest concern today, when they were saying the mitigation fund is, you know, going to be capped. So they're making the providers whole. Correct?
Correct.
They're not making the cities whole. And until the state is willing to make the cities whole, I don't think. The city should be having that burden. I think that's our biggest fight is telling the state, you have to make the cities whole if they're going to have this.
And if I can, Mayor, maybe to provide some color around that, there is a. I'll call it a companion piece of legislation that's working through the session. It doesn't on its face look like companion legislation, but it is a bill dealing with. The imposition of an additional point two zero percent sales tax. Of which some would go to transit, some would go to counties, and some would go to cities. There's the fifth fifth. Um, within that legislation, there is a carve out that allows Salt Lake County to take their portion of the funds. And put it towards homeless services and behavioral health services. I believe the legislative intent behind that is to say. In essence, don't come to the state asking for additional resources. We're going to give this authorization to Salt Lake County. It would then be incumbent upon those communities to go make the case to Salt Lake County and.
Will that raise, raise the twenty-one million dollar deficit?
The twenty-one million dollar deficit.
Yeah, that the cities are paying out right now compared to.
So the.
What they're actually getting back.
The point oh five, which would be the county portion of that sales tax authorization generates about sixteen million dollars a year.
Sixteen?
Mm-hmm.
So sixteen and the five would make their twenty-one that they're short.
The only caution I would give you there is that the way it's drafted in legislation, as I say, can be used for homeless resource services. Or behavioral health services, which is. A very big definitional loophole to allow it to go and underwrite all the mental health services.
And that's my concern is. Where they're really put it. They need to commit it to homelessness. And making those cities whole. I mean, Midville is spending. Millions above what they're getting reimbursed, and they've got sixty-five thousand residents. And yeah, other cities have nothing.
It is certainly being sold as a way in which we can address the shortfalls in funding for homelessness, but the way the language is drafted.
It's not gonna force it.
Broader use category.
Yeah.
Is that companion bill gonna go, you think?
It is. It's a leadership priority right now, so I spoke with leadership in both the House and the Senate last night, and it seems.
Yeah.
Geared for success at this point. And Mayor Wilson has indicated that she would support moving it to the council for consideration and adoption. If it has this provision that allows the county to use its portion to address homelessness and behavioral health services. So. All indications are Salt Lake County would impose that fifth fifth, as we're calling it.
Yeah. And it's just what they're going to use it for.
Correct.
Cause. Really, the cities that are having the resource centers need to be made whole. But. So who wants to gamble on having a one-year temporary shelter? But they could change the rules next year and then still put a permanent shelter here.
As I've.
Change their rules so often. I know they have, I know, it's a headache.
I mean, I think our goal, if that were directionally where you wanted to go, would be to statutorily codify that you would not be considered as a host for the permanent shelter. Again, they could come and undo that statutory reference, but they would be proactively passing something versus something that would just be based on a promise. So it would be our intent that we would actually statutorily codify that provision if we were to voluntarily agree to the temporary.
Yeah. So the odds are. From what I've heard in calm last week and then our meeting today, and then we're having another homeless meeting tomorrow.
Correct, yeah.
Let's talk, anyway, so, um, stakeholders meeting tomorrow. So if Mill Creek takes and has a permanent temporary shelter. Then the liquor store wouldn't even work as a temporary shelter shelter next winter. But if we wanted to volunteer to have that next winter. If we could have promises that it's gone forever from us. That might not be a bad gamble, but then Mill Creek may just have one. They already have a spot picked out for one for the. Ever future.
And I think at this point, they're just waiting.
Permanent temporary shelter.
Permanent seasonal is the best way to look at it.
Yeah.
So it would be the winter shelter on a permanent basis.
But the understanding they bus them in and bus them out.
That's correct.
Is it only on cold? Blue days or is it all winter?
All the time. Yeah, they did have a code blue today, allowing people to open churches. I mean, the one bill. Open churches and rec centers and different things to house those on days like today. But there it's thirty degrees, we'd be on blue almost all the time. They need to change that temperature. But. What are your thoughts?
I think we need some time to think about this. It's a hurry.
You have fifteen minutes, basically.
Yeah, I mean, we do have a stakeholders meeting tomorrow where I think they're wanting us to come with a. Suggested approaches to how we want to entertain this. And I certainly don't want to be offering things up that.
That we don't want to offer.
Not the will of, of the council. That's why I need a little bit of direction tonight to say, we're at least willing to entertain this, or if the answer is, no, we're not.
Yeah.
That's okay, too. I just need to make sure I understand that before tomorrow's meeting.
Well, my fight the whole time has been we're close enough to one, we shouldn't have to have one. So. What do you think?
I think that your illustration of the situation is probably the best one we have, that. It's a gamble. Maybe it would work. They can always change the rules. They've changed the rules every year. We've been successful in fighting it off so far. Would we be successful again? We don't know. So it's kind of the.
Well, and.
Poison sort of a situation.
Yeah, and multiple times, oh, you guys are just off the table. You're close enough to one, you're fine. And then the next day or an hour later. Oh, no, we're looking at the liquor store. I mean, if the liquor store hadn't come up in these meetings about twenty-six times. I would feel good with, eh, we have, we're close enough to one, we're not going to worry.
The thing that scares me about the liquor store is it's free.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right, so it's gonna be the easy choice for.
Well, and that's just it. I mean. They're using a county library up in Mill Creek. They could use this here. I mean, we can say we don't want it. And they'll still do it. So we either be willing participants or we go kicking and screaming. What were you gonna say?
I was gonna ask how likely is it you think we can get this statutory exclusion in there, Lincoln?
Yeah, I, I, I think if we came to the table and said, we're willing to do this on a temporary basis, and again, please keep in mind, this is fluid. It could be a year, it could be two winters until they build the one in Mill Creek. There's a host of kind of elements that go into this that I just. Need to really express, this is going to be a fluid process to a certain extent, but I think we could definitely get a statutory. Provision in it that says if we essentially play ball today, we are going to be excluded from the conversation as it relates to.
So you feel at least optimistic about that?
Yeah.
And with Mill Creek kind of being in the mode of, we'll do your permanent one down the road. But. Yeah, I would almost say, you know, be the hero, say we'll do it one year. Have all the restrictions so we don't do it again, get it over with. But what does everybody else?
Good, I find, should they bus in and bus out?
Yeah.
Very good.
Yeah, and if they have, um, anybody that comes, gets on the bus and gets there and is compromised in any way. They take them right back. They put them back on, and they're not actually buses. They started with buses, now they're doing vans. So if you have three that are intoxicated or. Compromised in any way, or even if they're just rowdy and causing problems inside the center, they put them in the van and they take them back to Salt Lake. Is how Mr. or Mayor Silver Strini said. They were doing it, so.
I can add that we have watched the Mill Creek shelter on our own. Off and on throughout the year, and it seems to have stayed pretty.
Pretty clean, okay. Yeah, I didn't know if he was just telling us to bait us all in or.
Right.
It's wonderful. All of you should have one.
Yeah, to me, I think if, uh, if that friendly. Voluntary approach is the best way to. To kind of massage in and a statutory exclusion, I'm, I'm also okay with that.
Okay, thank you.
If you're okay with that, too.
Yeah.
In writing? Oh, it is.
Yeah.
It's no matter what we do.
Yeah. Well, and they have the stick to make us lose.
They do. It's been a hard, hard gamble every year, and so far we've won, but you can never escape that feeling that we're going to lose one of these years.
Yeah, and we might lose bigger than just this one year. Because could, would we be out of the? Running for a permanent shelter?
Mayor, candidly, my biggest fear, and this is just Lincoln speaking, my biggest fear is. If they get into the liquor store and it's not statutorily constrained to a seasonal temporary shelter, it's going to become a permanent shelter.
So let's get them to begin with and just make it that.
Make it statutory, make it, we agree, it's one year. You include that statutorily and continue on with the Mill Creek plan or wherever else.
That's if they get in, and that's, I think, the game.
I think that's the safest way to play it.
I, I have to agree.
Yeah.
I hate it, but.
Oh, great. Well, and I really thought we could get around that liquor store. We should have just left the liquor store there, huh, instead of moving it.
If we didn't know, I mean. That was the whole reason we were fighting the liquor stores because of the homeless traffic around it.
Yeah.
We didn't know, and that was gonna happen. I think that's what we'd have done, yeah.
Just left it there.
Just left it. Cheers.
So with that feedback, Mayor Wayne, are you comfortable with me?
I am.
Conveying that sentiment?
Yeah, the council seems to be on board, so.
Okay.
Let's go ahead and do that.
We'll see you at the stakeholders meeting tomorrow.
Yikes, I may have to go to this.
Are you driving in?
I may have to go to this meeting just to see it.
Oh, my gosh. They're so much fun.
They are indeed.
You were on this morning for LPC, right?
I was, I was there in LPC for a while. Yeah. Uh, in regard to the rest of the legislative update, I did want to give you an update that there was a bill that successfully. Turned jurisdiction in terms of. Highway enforcement over to the Department of Highway Patrol as it relates to Mountain View Corridor, as well as to Bangator Highway. Also met with Representative.
Take care of Mountain View as well or only Bangator?
So in terms of the authorization, it says Highway Patrol would take jurisdiction in terms of enforcement on both. And then it assigns one point eight million dollars for traffic mitigation and additional enforcement on Bangator Highway during the construction phase on Bangator. That we go to the Highway Patrol as well. So the money is allocated specifically to Bangator Highway. But the jurisdictional transfers, it relates to enforcement mechanisms. Uh, and putting it under the purview of Highway Patrol is for both, both.
For both highways, great. So I heard it was only for Bangator and not for Mountain View.
Yeah, Representative Weeks and I spent some time on that, and that, that was the issue is she was focused on the money piece, not on the jurisdictional piece. Jurisdictional pieces, both the money is specific to Bangator.
Okay, so that should help our police force not have this much activity.
Yeah, that should turn it up, especially in terms of responding to accidents and.
You got any fun on that or? Commentary, Colleen? Do I want to ask?
I'm, I'm still stuck on the liquor store.
Okay, never mind. More help on Bangator.
Yes, uh, when, when initially came up with Colonel Rapid, uh, we of course expressed that our, our larger concern right now is with Mountain View, but.
Right.
Um, yeah, uh, their assistance would be helpful.
Yeah.
Both the, the accident investigations at the major intersections and enforcement.
Okay.
And we did get a, if you guys are at all interested, I don't know to what extent constituents are asking about the number of accidents and what those look like. I know we do have data specific to West Valley City, but if you want. Complete data on the entire corridor, I can get you that data as well. Um, UDOT's done a pretty comprehensive study of the number of accidents, and it is. Shocking to me how many accidents on Mountain View Corridor and on Bangator.
Yeah, those major intersections have always been in our top ten for accidents.
Yeah.
I think they said just in intersections, a hundred and thirty crashes. On Mountain View Corridor in the last calendar year. If you think about that, that's one every two and a half days. That we're having a major accident in an intersection on Mountain View Corridor. Granted, that's the entire jurisdiction of Mountain View Corridor, not just in West Valley City, but that's still pretty shocking.
Did you study about, is that the new one for them, for the people there?
I believe, I have to go back and look, council member, to see when they completed the study, but I believe it was, uh, completed in early twenty twenty-two, so it's about a year old at this point. If you'd like that information, happy to get it to the council. That's what we've got as updates at this point. Um, last thing I will mention as it relates to a financial, um, consideration. The Olympic bid committee is seeking, and it does look like they are going to be getting some additional funding for Olympic venues to the tune of an additional forty million dollars. We've been working with the folks over at Maverick to see what, I'll call it their wish list is. And have gotten that wish list as well, so we're actively working with House and Senate leadership on. Kind of getting some additional money. If you recall, last year, we were successful in getting ten million dollars allocated. To the city and to the Maverick Center for. Potential upgrades related to the Olympic Games. There would be an additional opportunity this year, so we're working through that effort as we speak as well.
Okay.
That's all I've got.
Was there any land use that you think we need to tackle?
At this point, I, I've talked to Public Works and to Steve Pastrick and, uh, Community Development and Planning. The bills as currently drafted, um, do not affect the process that we currently have in West Valley City in terms of how we process applications. We were successful in getting the amendments put in as it relates to completing the moderate income housing planning. That we've discussed in earlier council, uh, sessions. So at this point, I think we're pretty comfortable with where the bills are. Just need to monitor those through the last week and a half of the session.
Okay, cause the one today they were kind of talking about, it does or does not take away our development agreement ability.
You still have the ability to use.
Still have that right now.
Correct. What it does in the bill is it says you cannot have a development agreement to access base zoning. In essence, if you're just doing base zoning. You don't have to do it through development agreement. I'm talking to Steve Pastrick, that's not where, how we're handling those. When we do a subdivision, we do it in that process on the development agreement, which we would still preserve that right.
Be able to do. Okay. And then. Now there was a couple weird. These new charter school, well, they don't call them charter schools, micro schools. So are we gonna have to do some? Ordinances to kind of rein those in?
I mean, I think that's a policy consideration that certainly the council is going to have to bring up. There are. I will tell you with micro schools, anytime you talk about schools, there are unintended economic development, uh, consequences to that. Uh, keep in mind, there are several uses in the commercial setting that are restricted around schools. And when a micro school can be in someone's basement for five children, all of a sudden. You can't have a restaurant within six hundred feet of that location because the potential that they can sell alcohol. Right, I mean, so there are all of these sort of unintended. Potential implications on how we're addressing the micro schools. We believe we've gotten the restaurant provisions pulled out so that that's not triggering. But we do need to sit down with the economic development team and make sure from a regulatory standpoint, we're contemplating those sorts of issues. Additionally, it's going to be the registration. I mean, many of these, it's not going to be like your traditional brick and mortar school, so how are you going to know they're there unless there are some sort of. Registration or business license associated with them identifying themselves as being located within the city. So that's certainly something. Post-session, we're gonna have to sit down and figure out how we keep our hands around where these are located from a land use perspective and. Attractive nuisance or kind of competing uses adjacent to the, to the facility.
Okay. Yeah, cause that was one of, it's like we have charter schools, now we have micro schools. Now you're letting them have all their money, they can just.
Homeschool.
Homeschool. In quantities, well, and up. Homeschool in quantities, well, and up to a hundred students if you have it like in a warehouse or somewhere big enough. Yeah, so in up to a hundred, there just only has to be twenty square feet per student. And then in your home, there has to be thirty-five square feet per child. Oh, wackadoodle. So.
So we're definitely gonna want to keep our eye on it, especially as it relates to some sort of business licensing or some sort of registration so we know where they're at.
Yeah. Well, and they're not a nuisance. If you can have twenty students come to your house, the cars bringing them, taking them, you know, picking them up.
We all see what the school zone looks like every day. That's gonna be potential.
But it does say in here for these micros that we can put regulations on for the parking, loading, unloading, queuing up. So we can have be a little bit more restrictive than they have been with the charters.
Correct.
So that was good. So, okay. Anybody else have any bills they were worried about or?
Thanks, Mayor. We'll time on seeing you tomorrow.
Yeah, I'll leave about six AM to get up there, right? You should be back. All right, now we'll turn the time to Mr. Pyle and Mr. Johnson for Bangator Highway discussion.
Thank you, ma'am. I don't have really much of an introduction other than just to say it's been a while since we talked about Bangator and UDOT's trying to move forward, so we thought we, it would be time to do an update on it.
Thank you. Yeah, this is uh, as Mr. Pyle said, this it's kind of time for a Bangator Highway update. There's a lot happening out there and um, if I could have Nicole promote me to a presenter, I'm gonna share my screen in a few minutes. But so there's really three things that I'd like to cover today. Uh, the first is an update on on the Bangator Highway environmental document from forty-one hundred South to California Avenue. Um, as you'll recall, in December of twenty twenty-one, the City Council um, passed a resolution stating that the the West Valley City prefers that there be uh, a frontage road solution built as part of Bangator Highway. Um, as a reminder, the the intersections north of thirty-five hundred South are all spaced at a half a mile, which precludes the construction of traditional uh, interchanges that you would see with normal freeway construction. The minimum spacing for traditional intersections is is a mile and so uh, to have access at all the interchanges between or the the location, the intersections uh, north of thirty-five hundred South would take something more than than uh, just traditional intersections and it would be a frontage road solution and and I and we've talked to the council about this several times and really my point, my message today is just to give you a heads up, um, as this environmental document has advanced, UDOT's to the point where they're ready to to state that their preferred alternative is the interchange version, which would preclude um, having traditional access at thirty-one hundred South. Twenty-four hundred South actually has decent access under their proposed uh, design. Um, but thirty-one hundred South, everybody that accesses Bangator off of thirty-one hundred South would need to to use either Fortieth West. If they were going south, it depends on which direction they're coming from, or thirty-six hundred West to get to either Parkway Boulevard or thirty-five hundred, thirty-five hundred South. And so um, really my, our message today is that that that's kind of, that's what you're going to see when when you got actually present presents this to the public. Um, and I don't know that there's much we can do about it. As you recall, uh, the UDOT project manager for Bangator, when she came to the City Council last time, they presented all the options that were being considered and there was about a three hundred million dollar difference between the interchanges versus the uh, frontage roads and and a very significant right of way uh, take difference as well. So um, if there's any questions on on that, I'd be happy to entertain them, but um, really, we just were trying to prepare you because it was, it really is contrary to what the city requested in the in that resolution uh, at the end of twenty twenty-one. At least that piece of of that resolution.
Resolution. So is this first picture the actual what they want to do?
Um.
That's the uh, overhead, the bird's eye.
Yeah, with all the little orange dots.
Um, so let me share my screen.
I'm probably catching on to what this is.
It's a key kind of to the.
Yeah, so look one.
I need to be promoted to a.
Uh, Dan, I promoted you. I think you just have to accept it.
No, I got it. There we go. So yeah, that PDF, so this is um, this is actually, we could go to the kind of the next discussion. Which is uh, so the the PDF that I that is included in the packet is a uh, it's really a graphical representation of two alternatives that are being considered at forty-one hundred, forty-one hundred South. The city has also um, made a a statement that we prefer to have Bangator go underneath forty-one hundred South or Bangator go underneath as many cross streets as we as we can. And um, forty-seven hundred South uh, is actually currently in design. And um, they have a design builder onboard that's actually really vetting out that that um, design and Kobe's working very closely with them through that process and unless they come up with some kind of a fatal flaw, that's what will be built on forty-seven hundred South.
Under?
Is Bangator underneath, yes. But and eh, you know, and and to make that happen, they of course, request the city pay the difference, which is likely to be a four million dollar difference. And so once that gets solidified from a design perspective, we'll bring, you'll likely see some kind of a funding agreement um, to work that out, whether that's local funds or state funds, we'll figure that out, but but that's that's up and coming. And so the the action that we we really would hope to get some feedback on today is forty-one hundred South. So as as UDOT's designs have developed, um, they've the problem is you as you approach the Great Salt Lake, the the groundwater gets shallower and shallower. And um, they've told us that thirty-five hundred South, it's not feasible at all to do any kind of a Bangator under solution. And and anything north of that as well. And so that leaves us with forty-one hundred South, which actually uh, the the groundwater is, it's it's not as good as, you know, forty-seven hundred South, the solution that they're designing is actually just forty-seven hundred South will be flat. You won't even notice Bangator Highway driving through it. And it'll be what we all hoped it would be. Forty-one hundred South, the groundwater is getting more and more shallow and they actually have to raise forty-one hundred South up by about ten feet um, to to accommodate Bangator going underneath it because they can't go deep enough with Bangator to to not conflict with the with the groundwater. And so what this PDF is is kind of a, the UDOT has modeled what both types of intersections would look like. They called the Bangator under version a hybrid, uh, what do they call it? A hybrid option and then the Bangator over option. And so I've got a couple of things. This PDF will just run through the pictures. They may or may not be very helpful, but I've also got a three D model that I think is is most helpful. That'll give you a good picture of what this might look like. And so this first one is just you're you're on forty-one hundred South approximately thirty-nine hundred West looking east. And you can kind of see in this top version that you can kind of see forty-one hundred South. There's 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 a hill and so, you know, it's and and then in the bottom version, obviously you'd see the bridge, looks like every other most other intersections like through West Jordan that you would uh, you have a good feel for what they're gonna look like. This next one is is on forty-one hundred South near the Harmon Home looking west. So you can again, see the that slope climbing up and um, and uh, this next one is on Bangator Highway uh, southbound approaching forty-one hundred South and um, from Bangator Highway, you can't really tell. It looks to me, I mean, you're gonna look, it's gonna look a lot like a hundred and fourteenth or a hundred and sixth um, from Bangator. Uh, if we go under. Um, and then obviously it's gonna look like all the other seventy-eighth and seventieth if if we go over. Uh, from Bangator's perspective, this is where it gets kind of interesting is is uh, this is looking from the old Granger Medical's parking lot. And and this is where it becomes quite pronounced. You see the the impact that raising forty-one hundred South up ten feet has. And so from their parking lot, it may feel like you're in a bit of a hole. And um, you know, and so the Bangator over version, the bottom version, that like the total height of the structure is about ten feet higher than than what this would be. You know, but but the hybrid option, that ten foot, uh, you know, that these these walls will be about ten feet. And they're, but they're right there and it's extremely close. And so, you know, this church you can see in the background, um, kind of the steeple gives you a little bit of perspective in what you might be able to expect um, with, it says my internet connection is unstable. I hope that's not the case, but um, anyways, so that's that's from Granger Medical and you can see the kind of the impact of of what that raising forty-one hundred South looks like with that hybrid option. That's again, it's kind of a similar perspective, but from higher up and a little bit further south from Granger Medical. Um, and then another Bangator shot looking north. And uh, let's see, so this is south of forty-one hundred South and a little bit west of Bangator. On this side of Bangator with this option, you're the uh, they actually are uh, with the hybrid option with forty-one hundred South coming up so high, they have enough space, they would slope it down and you wouldn't see walls. But you would definitely see um, I mean, it's still gonna be a hill and and there's definitely some some impact. And then another shot approaching Bangator uh, looking east. And then looking west from forty-one hundred South approaching Bangator from the opposite direction. And then this last one, or no, second last one is Kerry Drive. So that's the road that's on the the east side of Bangator, north of forty-one hundred South. It will be closed off with a cul-de-sac, no matter what. There's no option that has that connecting in. And so this gives you a view of what it might look like in that cul-de-sac with with the wall. Um, or with a retaining wall holding forty-one hundred South up. And then with the bridge as well. And then this last view is from Pinehurst Circle, which is on the west side of Bangator Highway. A little bit north against two or three cul-de-sacs north of forty-one hundred South. Um, and again, it actually, those don't look terribly different. The hybrid option is is lower and so that's um, the PDF. Let me just get you a quick little view from uh, their three D model, if it doesn't glitch and crash on me. So this is the hybrid model. Um, this is again, Granger Medical's parking lot. And so um, it's it's not without impact. And so really, and then maybe let me get you one look at is this one? Well, here's, let me point out another difference. UDOT is actually doing uh, they're clearing an environmental footprint for a Mountain View style trail. This is new because they've kind of recently added it since the governor recently put an emphasis on trails. And so, so they've added that to this and and the Bangator over version includes a bridge over forty-one hundred South with that trail and the Bangator under version includes a tunnel underneath forty-one hundred South. So whether you like it.
Tunnels are just.
There's benefits to both. What's that?
Tunnels are just mischief mischief?
That there's there's potential for that. Yeah. And so what we're hoping to get from you today is is UDOT has told us they are uh, they're only going to advance one of these alternatives to the final design. When we did forty-seven hundred South, they were in a big rush and they would not, and so in in order to take some of the questioning out of the process, they just cleared both over and under. But they said they're not going to do that in this case. They will only advance one design to to as their preferred alternative. And to them, they really don't, well, they do have a preference, but but they're willing to, they're willing to build this hybrid version if the city wants it and will kind of make a financial commitment to cover that four million dollar which is theoretically the delta between the two elements. And so what I'm hopeful, hoping to get today is is maybe a temperature of the council. Um, do you have the will, like, knowing the forty-one hundred South has to go up? It's not nearly as good as, you know, it's not gonna be the same as forty-seven hundred South, which is really why they put these these exhibits together so that you could visualize it and and not be disappointed when it's not flat and and so to really get a good understanding what that's gonna look like. So with that, I'll entertain questions or comments or.
So to the council.
Is there one option that has less of an impact on right of ways and taking out other homes or businesses?
Well, as it relates to these two, at forty-one hundred South over and under, they're basically, I believe they're the same. I don't think there's any substantial difference that way. Um, in comparing the, as I mentioned before, the uh, frontage road version has a much bigger foot footprint like that, you know, corridor wide through West Valley City, the frontage road version has about a hundred more relocations than the uh, interchange version, which is another part of that that makes you not favor the interchange version.
Specific properties, uh, that one church right there on the corner of Bangator and.
Yeah.
Will they take more of that property or?
That church is anticipated. So they left it in these models really to give it perspective because the steeple is pretty helpful to it's a landmark that we all know.
The Life Church, right?
No, no, this is the West Church at forty-one hundred South.
Okay.
Yeah, it's on the the uh, uh, west side of Bangator, north of forty-one hundred South, right at Hawkeye Drive.
Will they take that whole property?
Forty-seven, I'm thinking forty-seven.
That's what they were told uh, about twelve years ago when they were widening forty-one hundred.
Yeah.
They took five more feet of it, they have to take all.
Years ago, they didn't know, but they know now that that church actually will be a total take.
Yeah.
Yeah. And in these graphics, it was really left for perspective to to let you see what it would look like in order to remain, but it will, it's not anticipated to remain.
So the residents in that area really wanted to go under.
Yeah.
I don't have a problem with under ten foot rise is about what this room is tall.
It's four feet taller than me, so yeah, probably a little bit.
Yeah, it's just hard to not know what it would look like if we have a road in West Valley that has a ten foot rise.
See if I can move this around without getting into glitch very much, because.
How far back would they start that?
It's about um, really. So I I think it's somewhere in here, like right before that Granger Medical.
East.
Access.
Out of the Granger Medical.
Yeah. So maybe that's a decent perspective. I I believe that somewhere in here, right at that Ranger Medical driveway is about where they would start transitioning upward. So.
Anybody else have a preference?
Question is, yeah, it's I think everybody, everyone, I don't, I personally think that the hybrid option is a good option, but it's, is it four million dollars worth? I don't know. That's where I would like your input.
Living on that groundwater myself, knowing that my father-in-law dug the basement forty years ago, fifty years ago. He came back that night and started putting fill back into it because.
Decided to go a little higher.
No, you just filled it.
Just said, not gonna do that.
Have a crawl spike.
Got it.
But uh, you know, I know the problem there. And I, but I'd still prefer the hybrid.
Anybody online have an opinion?
I just question, clarifying question. So that four million dollar delta or the difference? Um, you did mention that there, if that's the way they go, there would be options for uh, negotiating or obtaining additional funding or is that just gonna have to come out of our pocket?
Oh, there's certainly potential for us to find other sources, whether it's through the state. But I think it's probably wise to just plan as if it comes out of your own pocket, because it might have to.
Okay.
We've had given previous, what's that? Sorry.
No, I think just given previous conversations and um, the meetings and feedback that we've been getting, I mean, the folks, you know, in the area definitely wanted to try to preserve. I mean, the preference would be for this, so I'm okay with that. But yeah, there's that issue of the additional cost. Yeah, but I'm okay with the hybrid option.
Okay. I I think I've got what I need. I, I think I've got what I need. I feel like I've got direction from the council. Um, and if there's any questions, I'm happy to answer them, or I can be done.
Okay, was there any other questions? Hey, so then will they take this back and go to Granger High or whatever and have another focus group and let people know where they're just gonna design it? Without any input?
They will, that, so what will happen now, knowing that, that the hybrid is, the city, city still prefers the hybrid option? They'll actually probably push their, their outreach to the public back while they, because this is not the direction that they were wanting to go, and we reminded them that we wanted to go this way, and so, um, so they will go back to the public. The next steps will be, well, they've gotta refine the design and change their, their environmental document to accommodate this. But also then they've gotta do, uh, some neighborhood meetings, and then I don't remember exactly the what they're calling neighborhood meetings versus, I think they, they intend to meet with impacted property owners first.
Okay.
Um, and then have kind of a public meeting that really, that lays out all the options that were, that were presented that were analyzed, and then have their preferred alternative being that interchange version um, presented to the public for the public to then comment. And, and I'll, I'll say though, that the the interchange version doesn't come without questions. We have a lot of things that we're trying to work through. Like what does that actually do to our local traffic? Where does the traffic that accessed on thirty-one hundred South, how do they get to Bangor? What does that do to our intersection, intersection capacity? And so we're working through those types of questions with UDOT. And don't necessarily have answers yet on how that will all work out, so.
Okay. A question, so if we're gonna go with, if they want to go to the interchange, when would be the earliest they would have another meeting with the neighbors to let them know that, nah, you may not have to sell your house?
Um, uh, it would be, I'd imagine within the next two to three months. They were planning to have them mm, mid-March, if I recall, and it's probably another month or two after that.
Okay.
So.
So for basically thirty-five hundred north?
Yeah.
They don't wanna do, okay.
They, there won't be, there won't be frontage roads. You'll have traditional ramps. Um, and, and the actual design will be laid out in their public meetings, but um, where the property owners will be able to see how that impacts them and access, and it's definitely a very complicated transportation system as we're all aware.
So can you remind me, so they'll have thirty-five hundred? And then they'll have twenty-seventh, I mean, twenty-fourth, they won't have twenty-seventh.
They will have twenty-seventh, they won't have thirty-one, but, and twenty-fourth, actually, as it approaches thirty, or excuse me, twenty-one hundred South, they've actually got a decent solution there that gives it, um, pretty good access to twenty-four hundred South with, with kind of a frontage road system, actually, that
Okay.
interacts with the SR two oh one frontage road, or excuse me, SR two oh one frontage road and the frontage and the SR two oh one ramps as well. And so twenty-four hundred South isn't actually too bad. I'm, I think that's gonna work out okay. Our biggest impact, I feel, really is the loss of access at thirty-one hundred South. So.
I think that's easy to adapt, though.
Has potential opportunities as well to take, yeah, those, that traffic off of that road.
Hey. Any other questions? Hey, thank you. All right, well, now we're to the council calendar. Does anybody have any issues? None? Potential future agenda items?
I have one, um, and this may not have to be a full agenda item, but, um, a resident who, um, gets around, uh, via, uh, electric wheelchair, uh, had noticed that, um, on, she mentioned it was twice in the past year, um, where a sidewalk was either closed for repair or some kind of construction, um, but that she didn't really didn't see any signage of that closure until, um, she approached that rather than um, at an intersection, so she would have been able to avoid that or cross to the other side of the road, um, and just uh, brought that up, and I thought that might be worthy of, uh, maybe looking at, um, how we put up signage when we do closed sidewalks for any given reason, and, um, if we could be mindful of, of maybe putting those closer to the actual intersections where, uh, folks using electric wheelchairs or other devices are, um, able to choose a better route rather than continuing down the block and then finding out down the road, but just wanted to raise that.
Okay. So we can put that on as a conversation, communication item in the future?
Sure.
That doesn't need an ordinance or anything, right?
No.
Just a policy.
Be like, uh, just a description of what we're doing and illustration of what happens after.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Right. Thank you.
Even be an email for me, if that's fine, but. Okay, we're gonna do that too.
Either way. Okay.
Uh, I'd like to mention, if you're gonna, one of the items I had on the strategic list was
Oh, yeah.
Puzzle project. Could be just a, a presentation, then make a decision on it. I think we probably need to have that presentation sooner than later, and so we can make this thing.
Okay. Got that?
Do you want us to?
Nicole's probably doing all the notes.
Right, yeah.
Yeah.
Hopefully she's got those, or if there's only two, I can remember that maybe, that's about my limit. Uh, do you want us to bring in the vendor for that presentation?
I think, you know, he can answer many questions.
That I probably can't, right, yeah. Okay.
So sometime that would be work with them?
Yeah. We can do that.
Hey, seeing no other council reports? I went to Clue the other night. It is really good, and I had someone say, um, wasn't expecting the quality that there was.
Yeah.
And I said, well, why would you expect anything less? But anyway, so the quality is surprising people and it's really good.
And I'd like to make one comment. It's not disparaging, but I did book my tickets through the box office. They gave me four tickets, four seats in a row. The only problem was the theater has removed two of those seats, so they can put in seats for deaf interpreters.
Oh.
I went back up and I said, I've got A, B, C, and D, and A and B aren't there. She came down, looked at it, and said, well, that, that doesn't show up on the map when we send out.
Right.
I booked these through the box office. In fact, Melissa booked them for me.
Okay.
And finally came back here and said I could do C, D, E, and F.
Okay, so that's just a glitch?
Just a glitch in, in their programming because A and B just aren't there. I didn't really feel like sitting on the floor.
So we just need to kind of.
Get that fixed, obviously, but I wonder how that hasn't come up before already.
I don't know.
Hasn't, and I haven't heard about it. But yeah.
So I called on Saturday. And it just kept, the answering machine doesn't say we're busy, we'll get back to you, doesn't leave a, if you leave a message, we'll get to you in the next business day. Which when you're calling on Saturday, the day of a production, uh, call on Monday is not gonna do you any good.
Yeah.
So I just called three day, three times in a row till they finally answered. And said, we're super busy. Can I call you back? Yeah. Just do that to begin with, instead of saying. So other people that aren't as obnoxious and persistent as I am, may have waited for a callback on Monday and missed.
Stood there in place where they were supposed to be sitting, and finally found a seat for me.
Yeah. So we might wanna change that voicemail too.
So Nancy's listening, so she'll check that too.
Yeah.
She already texted me and said she'd get on the seat thing.
Yeah, and just check that email that, I mean, the voicemail that says that, maybe just say, leave a message, we'll get back to you as soon as possible.
Okay.
Because I was trying to book tickets for the seven-thirty that day.
Yeah.
And other people might be doing the same thing. Oh, our plans tonight canceled, let's go to the play, and if it says they won't call you back till Monday, that's a little tough, so, okay. But it was really good. We enjoyed it.
Great fun.
Yep. Are they? Yeah. They'll have fun. All right, no other council reports. We're gonna leave the strategic plan until everybody else is here in person. Is there a need for a closed session? Okay, one more action item. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Hey, thank you so much.